Thank you, Mr. Betts. Call to the public.
Robert Morris.
My name is Bob Morris, 6020 East in Seattle Run South. Two and a half year member of the Water Advisory Committee and a chemical engineer. I'm here today because the town staff recommended an adjusted 14 percent increase on water company, that's all three of the water companies, including wastewater, on expenses for the next fiscal year. That's adjusted, taking out the capital, because I'm only interested in the operating, maintenance, and overhead expenses. In addition to that, there's a proposal, $50,000, to do a water rate study. And we all know where water rate studies go. It's going to want more money. I think that's premature. Very premature. When the water companies prove that they can operate with the resources they have and do that efficiently, then I think it's time to give them more money. Maybe you do it at the same time, simultaneously, but just to give them more money, the water rate increase is the wrong way. Let me just give one example. After the last budget meeting, I sent to each person on council, town manager, utilities manager, seven or eight objectives that the town manager should have around the water area. It's my understanding that he doesn't have any objectives, which is an abomination, quite frankly. Who in this world, when they're in business, doesn't have objectives? None that I know of. Anyway, one of those objectives, number four, is probably the most important. It's buried down in there. And it goes back to an order that this council put upon the town staff to implement established performance measurements for the efficient service, maintenance, and economic performance of the water and wastewater utilities, to be presented to council no later than the end of November 2014. Three of you voted for that. I guess that says all there needs to be said about town manager left. Because they've done nothing about this. And here we sit with a 14 percent increase, a water rate study, and guess what? You still can't certify to the people of Cave Creek that these towns are efficiently run. And I will certify and argue with anyone who knows anything that they are not efficiently run. I've got a list as long as my computer paper will hold. It's huge. So it's time to measure and monitor the performance of these companies and hold them to account for what they have now. I, for one, will not support even a study, garbage in, garbage out.
Three minutes.
The history that they have in their files is not good. It's got bad numbers. We shouldn't justify the bad management that's gone on in the past. I'm sorry that the town manager is not here to listen to this. He was the one that directed. Thank you very much.
Paul Deefen Durfer.
Paul Deefen Durfer, 418-38, North 56th Street. I know the bike lanes have been a source of angst for some of the folks in the community, but I just wanted to say thanks for making it safer for me and other Creekers to ride our bikes through town. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Carrie.
I have no other call to the public, so let's move.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Call to the public is still open. Okay, council will proceed. Town manager, anything?
Oh, this is not.
Okay. Under the consent, part of the agenda this evening, there are two items, approval of the April 4th, 2016, regular council meeting minutes, and those meeting minutes of April the 11th, 2016, that was the special council budget work session, and its motion to approve. So moved. Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes clearly have it. Thank you, council. Under the first of the general agenda items, one, council discussion and update by Steve Betts on discussion related to the 4,000 acres of state trust land. Mr. Betts.
Do you want me to...
At the podium. Well, either way, just as long as you're speaking and no microphones.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Steve Betts, and I'm a part-time resident here at 5115 Rockaway Hills. And you have brought me on board, I guess, to help you come up with options for how we might conserve the 4,000 acres that were annexed into the town in a way that isn't going to cost us a lot of money and isn't going to cause us to do something that I think a lot of us wouldn't want to have happen, which is to bust the bank or to raise taxes and things like that. And so we have talked about an approach, a concept, a concept of using something called a mitigation bank. And we've now had several conversations with the state land department, all the way up to the state land commissioner. We've had a series of meetings with the deputy land commissioner, Wesley Neal, and those conversations have gone very well. I'm going to talk through a little bit how that process could work so that the community maybe gets a sense of the direction we're headed. And I personally, as a resident, I'm very excited about this because it's a way that we might be able to get these lands into a conservation status and some recreation use on those lands, consistent with that status, in a way that doesn't have those negative effects. So a mitigation bank. Mitigation banks, actually, we're not reinventing the wheel. It's something that mitigation banks are used all across the country, and so it's a kind of a somewhat tried and true method. In this case, what would happen is that the state land department would transfer into this mitigation bank that would be set up, would transfer the 4,000 acres into the mitigation bank, and then in exchange for transferring into the mitigation bank where those lands would be conserved and preserved, the bank would then receive from the Army Corps of Engineers credits. These conservation credits then could be used for permit purposes somewhere downstream. That's important because that's where a developer can buy those credits, can purchase those credits from then the bank, and reimburse the land department for the value of those lands. That's important because as we've, I think, all know, and as we've discussed in the past, the land department does need to get value for these lands. The land department can't just set aside these lands. The lands are held in trust primarily for the school kids of Arizona, and so they do need to end up getting value for these lands. So, again, in concept, land department moves the lands into the mitigation bank, the lands then, there's a conservation easement put on these lands, the lands are, sometimes they need to be cleaned up and mitigated and have some improvement done to the land. And we're going to have to kind of work on that a little bit to determine what improvements, what enhancements may need to be done to the lands if there are some mine tailings, if there's some degradation to the lands because of off-roading, things like that. We might have to go in and do some cleanup work. All of this has to be approved by the Army Corps of Engineers when we go through the process of setting up the bank. But when that's all done, when it's all set up, then these mitigation bank credits will be established. Those credits can then be sold to developers downstream. The potential purchasers of those are developers of the state trust land downstream, down in what's called the Desert Ridge area. There's a number of, there's a large area of state trust land, very, very valuable state trust lands that they've already set up for sale in the city of Phoenix, along major corridors, along major freeways, and with infrastructure already in place. But most of those state trust lands do need what are called 404 permits from the Army Corps of Engineers in order to be developed. And so these credits can be purchased by those developers. So if that developer is touching waters of the United States, meaning if they're disturbing any washes or any wash areas when they're crossing a wash, they can purchase these credits to be able to disturb that wash. It allows them then to develop those lands by purchasing credits in our mitigation bank that purchases these lands. So our lands get preserved, lands down there get developed, the land department ends up getting compensation for the lands up here. Under the process that we're talking about then, the town of Cave Creek would end up being the operator and maintenance entity for these lands, for this mitigation bank. So that the town, much like Spurcross, when we set up Spurcross years ago, the town had the option of being the entity that would manage those lands, ended up giving it to the county because at the time the county was more equipped to manage it. In this case, the town could decide to operate and manage these lands, or you might contract with somebody to do that for you. So anyway, that's the concept we are pursuing. We've had now a series of meetings with the deputy land commissioner and his staff, the last one with the attorney general's office present. So far, the meetings have gone very well in concept, but let me throw a word of caution out there, a key party has not yet been in the room, which is the federal government, the Army Corps of Engineers. So all of this, whenever you set up a mitigation bank, it all has to be approved by the Army Corps of Engineers. But we had in the room a couple of experts who have done these mitigation banks before in the private sector, one attorney and one who is a private sector consultant. These lands, the 4,000 acres of state trust land that we're looking at, I think we've all, a lot of us at least, have looked at them, we've been on them, we've hiked them. They're really nice lands. They have a lot of biological and conservation kind of characteristics that make them valuable for these kinds of credits, for these kind of conservation opportunities. So we're optimistic that when a package is put together, that the Corps of Engineers will look at these lands and say, yeah, these are the kinds of lands that we would like to see set aside and conserved and protected, and this is a good exchange for the lands that would be then disturbed downstream by these developers. And oftentimes, by the way, it's a multiple. It's several hundred acres for 10 acres that's disturbed or something like that. And so the Corps would help sort of figure out the ratio. So, next steps at this point, we're going to continue to meet with the land department to continue to pursue the option because this would be, from our point of view, the best option to get these lands conserved in a way that doesn't cost us the army leg and get it into a position where we, the town, can control these lands for the benefit of our community. So we're going to continue the dialogue. The next step would be to have an IGA drafted, and it's being drafted now by the attorney general's office, intergovernmental agreement between the town and the state land department, where we would split the cost of what's called a biological assessment, which means a consultant would be hired. It's not a large amount of money. It might be $20,000 kind of range that would be split between the city and, I'm sorry, the town and the state land department. And it would hire some biologists, some experts, to go out and spend some time on the land to figure out the value of these lands, to make sure that the lands have the kind of value that these consultants believe that the Army Corps of Engineers would react favorably to, so that we could then start looking at putting together the application for the mitigation bank. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from council. Councilman McGuire.
We're talking here about land that's disturbed in one municipality, for example, Desert Major Phoenix, going into a mitigation process with land in another municipality. Is that an issue?
It is not an issue. The Army Corps of Engineers and frankly, the animals and the bugs and bunnies that use this particular habitat area, they don't recognize jurisdictional lines though. And the nice thing about this is that the lands that we have up here flow very nicely down into those state trust lands that are being developed down below. So it's actually, it's part of the same sort of habitat area, it's part of the same tributary area, and so from looking at it from our initial consultant's view, these should be very eligible lands. It's in the same basin area.
Thank you. Councilman, is there a question?
How soon will the IGA, which is being prepared by the attorney general's office, be ready to go? What do you anticipate, is it a draft or...
Councilmember, I don't know a specific. They were asked by the deputy land commissioner to take the first shot at a draft, and that draft would be provided to your town attorney. So it's up to the attorney general, and there were two AGs in the meeting, two attorney generals. That's a good sign. And let me also say, I skipped over an important piece of information. Not only were there two attorney generals in the meeting, so the AG's office is taking this seriously on behalf of the state land department, but the attorney general's office gave the state land department authorization to hire an outside attorney to represent them because the AG's office recognized that they don't have expertise in land banking. They'd never done one before, and so they actually hired an outside lawyer from a major law firm who had done many of these. And so we had a third lawyer in the room on behalf of the state land department who's done mitigation banks.
At what point would you bring the Corps in?
The discussion was, yeah, the discussion was after the biological assessment has been done, after we know what we have to offer. The thought was then would be the appropriate time to go and approach them.
That's all I have at this time. Councilor McGlynn?
Well, it's probably some of the folks that are sitting here. The land that we're talking about has, in the future, could be sold and more residents could be up there. And given what I've heard since I've sat on council, we don't necessarily have the water to expand out that far. This is a nice compromise, a great idea, and it does help with the flora and the fauna and the animals that live up in that area, given what the expense may or may not be, which is still kind of an unknown at this point. But philosophically, it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, but I truly take no credit for the idea. So I think I maybe mentioned earlier, at an earlier meeting, that I have the pleasure of chairing Governor Ducey's state land transition committee, the committee that transitioned the state land department. And we had to interview, as part of the process, we interviewed the past state land department commissioners. And it was actually a concept that the state land department has been looking at for several years. They just didn't have the time or the expertise to actually pursue one. So it's something they've been considering for a while. They didn't have the time or expertise, and they hadn't found the right fact situation, the right to do it. So it actually came up back in January, December and January, when we were doing the transition for the governor.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Lamar, questions?
You touched just briefly on the use of the bank, the conservation bank credits for defraying what would be seen as the value to the state land department transition. Could you talk about how those credits, as they come in, once the bank is set up, how those can be used to help the town, the manager, with ongoing maintenance and the initial work that might need to be done on some, if it's a water flow kind of a conservation bank?
Right. So, and I had a conversation actually this morning with the deputy land commissioner about that in preparation of my talk for today. I wanted to make sure that I was staying on the same page with him. I didn't want to say anything publicly that might be off track, that would hurt our discussions with them. And so we've talked about in that meeting, and I confirmed with him today, that from their point of view, as the money came in, as the dollars for those credits came in, that the first dollars would go for the land to pay back, to get the money into the education trust, which makes sense, and second money would likely go for the restoration, whatever restoration work was done on the lands. And that work likely that the town would be doing. So in other words, it would be reimbursing the town for whatever restoration work we're going to do on these lands, to restore it, to if there's any kind of materials out there or whatever we have to do. I did bring up about the operation and maintenance, and that's to be discussed.
Councilman McGuire, questions?
Through the annexation process, the town identified particular areas that it thought were environmentally sensitive. Has that process played a part in helping Cave Creek to make this deal?
Councilman, absolutely. The fact that we've sort of separated the 4,000 acres that are really not very developable, are environmentally sensitive, are spectacular lands and sensitive, from the 220 or so acres that really are developable and should be, yeah, that really helped a lot because it sort of shows these are lands that could be set aside in a mitigation bank like this. And it helped Wesley Neal, the deputy land commissioner, helped him with the concept right off the bat. He was able to get it right away, and he believes it helps him with meeting his constitutional fiduciary obligation to all of these lands by saying, look, I'm not taking all my lands and putting them in this mitigation bank. I'm just taking the ones that probably should be conserved and should be put in the mitigation bank. And these other 220 that have been set aside for development by the town and that we worked on years ago, those will eventually come to some form of development and will make more money for the school kids.
And I have one more question. The town has identified specifically 4,000 acres that we would like to preserve at minimal cost to the community. Does that number of 4,000 acres, how does that play into the land that might be available for mitigation?
That is the number. We're talking about the full 4,000, but I will say that that's where, and the land department is talking about the full 4,000, but that's where the Army Corps of Engineers will come into play. You know, we're going to have to persuade them that the entire 4,000 acres are all sort of appropriate for including in this bank. I think we all know, or maybe some don't, that this is not a contiguous 4,000 acre parcel, that these are parcels that are sort of spread out a little bit. They sort of wrap around Spurcross and around, there's a development parcel up there. And so it's going to be, you know, make for a little bit more of a challenge than if it were a contiguous parcel.
The mitigation bank that we're talking about, is that available throughout the state for developers throughout the state to be able to bank into? So it's very global within the state of Arizona?
Councilwoman, very good question, and it can be, but I think our strategy is going to be to limit it, and for a couple of reasons. We think that will make our case better to the Army Corps of Engineers. But secondly, I think that the, or we think that the land department would really like to be able to incent the moving and development of those state trust lands that they have there along the north part of Phoenix. And so they would like to target these credits on those lands along Desert Ridge and Paradise Ridge. And because of the connection to the habitat, I think we're being told that that might need for a stronger argument.
Steve, thank you. If you would sit there, I'm going to go to public comment, and citizens may have questions, and then I will come back to council for their comments. Ms. Carrie?
I have no speakers, ma'am.
Does anyone wish to speak and/or have questions on this? Ms. Marsolo?
Ms. Marsolo, Cave Creek. It's good to see you again, Steve. Steve and I go way back. We were always smarter in the 90s. I didn't agree with you then, and I don't agree with you now, but that's okay. Steve, just two questions. The $10,000 that the town would pay for the biological assessment, if that assessment comes back in the negative, the town has lost that $10,000. So it's kind of like an appraisal?
It could be viewed that way, as an appraisal. It's an evaluation of the character of the land from a biological sort of quality standpoint.
Thank you. What happens to the existing 4 development agreements if this mitigation bank should go into play? What happens to the existing 4 development agreements?
We have not had a discussion about that, so I can't answer that. I don't know that we've raised that question. They could stay in place, or they could go away. This is actually a better deal because under those agreements, we were having to buy the land at an appraised value, and I think that's what we're trying to avoid.
So if the agreements go away, if, and I realize you have an answer now...
I'm not saying they are going away.
Right. If they do, would they go away before the bank is put in place or afterwards?
I would not advise that. I don't think we would ever want them to go away unless we knew that we had in place a bank with the conservation easement permanently on those lands.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, mayor and council. Mr. Betts, it's a very interesting idea. As it happens, a number of years ago, I studied mitigation banks while I was a faculty member at Duke. Now, the mitigation banks were very different in that context than they are here, but they were under the same Section 404 program combined with Section G of the Enabling Legislation for the Department of Transportation's Highway Federal Highway Construction Program, which requires, in that particular set of circumstance, that there be provisions made for disturbing wetlands. So wetlands in the eastern United States fall under the same program as developments here would fall in activities that are joined, that are identified at some point as water-related entities of one sort or another. Now, in that context, one of the things that was especially important, this is the first time I ever heard of a municipality acting to try to establish a bank. In those situations, usually, the bank is established by some private entity that assures the integrity of the bank. And so the assessment that Mr. Betts talked about is really crucial to the integrity of the bank because what they're looking at, in the wetlands case, was the function of wetlands. In this case, it's the ecological assessment of the land and its ability to sustain certain critters and ecosystems, and that's what gives rise to the trade-off ratios between the land that you want to use at Desert Ridge or someplace else and what's going on in the 4,000 acres. That's the first thing. The second thing that's really important is that these are contracts that bind whoever owns the bank and the developing entity to assure that the services that are assumed to be mitigated by the bank's credits continue to be provided over the term of the contract, which is usually many, many years. Okay? And this came up to be a huge issue in the case of wetlands in North Carolina and around the southeast. So that's no small expense because it requires monitoring and continuous assurance to be sure that that contract is fulfilled, and the entity that sells the credits is the one who is responsible for that monitoring and maintenance. I would urge that the consultants looking at this, look at the environmental legislation in California, which is the closest analog to what you're proposing. Under legislation that California passed to get around some of the concerns about development, they established similar banks and habitat trade-off ratios. These are very complicated... These are very complicated, and I would not expect that anybody's going to make any money off of this. At best, you might be able to actually preserve the land, but that requires a very, very careful assessment of the commitment for these longer-term costs and who's responsible in the event that something goes wrong. The last issue, and the one that I'm least certain of in this context, because the lands are diffuse, that is, they're spread out, they're not all together, this may well impinge upon the private uses of adjoining lands, to the extent those adjoining lands and the activities on them might affect the protected areas. Anything that might be construed as influencing the ability of the protected areas to provide the ecosystem services would be prohibited under the terms of the contract that would be associated with the trading. So, I mean, this is a very creative idea. It is also very, very complex. And I think that the activities in California are the things that somebody wants to look at very, very carefully in this context. Thank you very much.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Monacino?
Regge Monacino, Cave Creek citizen. I'm not sure I understand this whole thing, so forgive me if I make some mistakes and I don't get it right. Credits can be sold to developers. Who determines the price that the developers pay? Is it per credit, per acre? Explain that, please.
Sure. The Army Corps of Engineers actually end up calculating it based on the cost of the land plus that cost of the mitigation that is done to the land. And if the O and M is thrown in, that would be put on top of that, too. And you are correct that if there is a private entity involved, that private entity has a markup on that, because they need to make a profit. I don't think we're actually talking about adding that factor into it in this case. But in this simple sort of formula that we're talking about, it likely could end up being just the percentage of land cost and the percentage of the mitigation cost divided by the acreage that's needed for that particular mitigation credit. And the Corps of Engineers would actually calculate that as part of setting up the mitigation bank to begin with.
One, I don't, this is not a correction, but this is where the trade-off ratio, I'm sorry.
No, you're right.
This is where the issue of the assessment that you talked about is so crucial, because it determines, it's not an acre-for-acre trade-off.
Right.
So that if the acres in the area that are being developed are regarded by some assessment that also has to be done and paid for by someone, and that's important. If they determine that that's got lots of unique services, then you might need to give 10 acres from the mitigation bank for a half an acre in the other bank. And it's the Corps of Engineers, based on the assessment and based on practice, that determines that. So that actually determines what the net ability to cover is.
No, 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 you are correct. And in fact, there may be certain areas within our mitigation bank that are more valuable than others in these credits. There may be areas where we've gone in and we spent a bunch of money on going in and doing some restoration, they're going to make those, give more credit to those lands, those restoration areas. Other areas might be very pristine from a conservation area, but they, and they're going to give some credit to that, but it may, that may have just a 10 to 1, as opposed to the 5 to 1 or the 3 to 1 ratio. And then if there could, and this is where we'll have to wait to see, there could be some endangered species credits also, if there's some habitat area for certain kinds of species, there could be that credit given also. It really depends what comes out of this biological assessment. And that's why it's important that we go get that biological assessment first, so that we know what it is we're actually dealing with before we know what, we can actually go and negotiate with these assessments. And the speaker is exactly right. It's a very complicated area. It's going to be important that we have some good quality technical help on this. And I'm hoping after we get the biological assessment done, we'll have a conversation. And if it shows that there is some good value here, and we have a good preliminary conversation, I think the next step then is to, with the land department, is to co-hire some kind of expert to take it to the next step. And the land department already has that in this attorney that they hired. They have an expert that's done this before. But it's probably also going to take an engineering planning firm that's done a number of these before also, because we don't have that expertise here at the town.
Who can spell that, Steve?
Ultimately, we're going to have to share that with the land department, but boy, I would love it if that's a drop in the bucket compared to buying this land.
Mayor, council, thank you. Evelyn Johnson, executive director of the Cave Creek Museum. Will there be any compensation, different our allowances for possible Ho-Hoakum or Native American ruins? Because there's probably some canal remains in that area.
Mayor, that's an excellent question. And if there are, that would be the kind of resource value that would be taken into consideration and actually would help the value of that conservation area. And then to the point that's already been made, in the contract, in our maintenance contract, in our operations contract, we would have to make sure that we take it upon ourselves to protect those areas and make sure those areas are in fact preserved and protected. Again, similar to the Spurcross situation.
Are the comments still open? Okay, Steve, thank you. Again, let me come back to council's not having anything tonight for comments, Councilor Nessler.
Well, I like the terms creative, and it's a hell of a challenge for a small community like Cave Creek. And as Steve has indicated, it's complex. You have to have the right people helping. I know a lot about the Corps of Engineers. I was hired as a consultant up on the Colorado River. And there's a better example of the wetlands in Colorado rather than North Carolina. And I think it's worth pursuing. You're only beginning. And if you ring the bell, it'll put us on the map, 4,000 acres. The base land exchange will take some time. And the trade-offs, as has been indicated, will be, it won't be acre-for-acre. The density transfers from the mountains that we're trying to preserve has been identified by the state land department, and we have that 240-acre parcel on Cave Creek Island. So good luck. Do you have a timeline?
At this point, what we've talked to the state land department about is getting the IGA going quickly so that we can get the biological assessment going this summer, because we would like to see if we can get in to see the Corps as quickly as we can, so that by this year, we know whether we have a bank process that we can pursue. And I think we would like to get to a point where it's a go-no-go still this year.
We're going to have you for the rest of the year, right?
Well, you have me as long as you want me, but I don't, this is, I am flunking my retirement. I really would prefer to stay retired, and I'm doing this as a labor of love for you all, because I do love these lands. Yeah. Thank you.
Councilman Bunch?
Where the annexation agreements not to be in force, you're looking at state trust land, that the underlying zoning on every single piece is one acre zoning, every bit of it. I welcome anything, because a lot of these areas we want to preserve are hillsides, are mountain sides. And if you want to know what that looks like when that gets screwed up, go down to the south side of Kebaback Mountain, take a look at what they've done down here, if that's what you want to see, then go ahead and say, well, let's get out of the agreements, let's not try this, let's not spend the $10,000 in attempt to see if we can't get the mitigation bank methods to work. In my mind, it's worth every bit of it, because I don't want to be able, have to sit and look up a hill at houses down the road.
Councilman McGuire, comments?
Since this has been in progress, I've made myself familiar with some of these areas. Some of them are very remote, but as development takes place, they won't be so remote. This is a continuation of a process that all of our citizens can be very proud of. When this community set up Spurcross, there's some events that happened, some stars came into line, and I hope that we can continue that, because the upside of this is wonderful.
Councilman Bunch?
I'm not sure I can even say how I feel, because I think we do our best up here to represent the town and the people who live here, who want more open space, who want that space to be available and not be built out where we can't even begin to bring water to some of those areas. So I just think this is just a great idea, and I'm thankful for people like Steve, that both Steves here, for your expertise and your desire to want to fulfill this dream for a lot of us who live here. Thank you.
And the mayor as well.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Mayor Laba?
Yeah, I guess first, before I have my comments, I want to thank you again, Steve. Every step of the way, we've had a whole series of conversations now. At each step of the process, Steve has worked on our behalf, with a great relationship with the state land department, to address all those issues and to nuance and grease the skids between our meetings. And as a result of that, every one of our meetings has been a building of trust. The folks that are from the land, state land department are actually working as partners in this, and actually are seeing what we always saw, which was that it was a win-win for this community and for state land department. And I think, and I know you pointed it out, one of the best concrete evidences of that is that they have retained an outside counsel that they're paying for to make sure that they have the highest quality, and he's used by every major developer in this state on these kind of deals. So we have some of the best expertise in the state of Arizona. We will continue, and he will be there to help guide, along with Mr. Sims, to make sure that we continue on in a systematic way to do this right. It is complex, but, you know, just because we're small doesn't mean we have to be stupid. And just because we're small doesn't mean that we should settle for having our town gobbled up and have silly notions of de-annexation. And let me go back to that for a minute. You know, many years ago, when we knew for a fact that Phoenix was fixing to annex all of the lands to the west of us, and put in four houses an acre for us, and basically surround us with housing developments, that's what was the driving force behind this community's overwhelming support for the annexation of this land, and part of this land is the 4,000 acres. So what have we done with that? Has this, as a promise kept to those citizens? Do we turn around and develop those lands? No, we've worked for, the mayor's work and former councils, other than the last one, has worked steadfastly to forward those agreements and to make sure that we did that annexation to protect us from the sprawl of Phoenix and that we turn that into open space that keeps this community rural and enhances the property values, both residential and commercial throughout the town. And it is very gratifying to see that we have some concrete progress. And just because we're small doesn't mean we need to be short-sighted, and just because we're small doesn't mean we have to gravitate to the lowest common denominator, and I'll use a phrase that the mayor's used before, and succumb to fear-mongering and we can't do in this community. We didn't start that way, and I hope we don't finish that way. And I see this as a great, a great step towards fulfilling our, the mandates of our general plan, which is to have total respect and adherence to the physical beauty that we're surrounded with and to preserve it. It's also a biblical obligation, but I'm not going to get into that since, hallelujah. Thank you.
Amen. I've said this before, thank you. This community is grateful for not only your hard work, but in political parlance, you have access, you have access to people who make decisions that in turn affect this community. In the years that I've worked with the state land department, I've never seen them so motivated to get something done, to spend their money, to get the right people on board in order to make this happen. Mitigation is complex. I've sat through these meetings, the last one, the vice mayor and councilman Bunch and I went for two and a half hours. And it takes a while to get your cerebrum around the concept that's being discussed. But I'm also reminded that Spurcross was complex, complex in a different way. It was owned by a great big insurance company and owned by a family in Phoenix that does a lot of development. The great American Insurance Company basically was telling us, if you're not making a decision in 24 hours, we're selling it to a buyer who's going to develop it, within our worst nightmare. That was complex, but we got it done. This is a different type of complexity. Mitigation is going to take time. It's not going to be a quick-action device. But I think there's something to that that is probably better, because it's steady, it's measurable, we can deal with whatever challenges come up all along the way. The IGA or the intergovernmental agreement, that can be done this year, and then we can begin to move forward with this. Yes, we do have political differences in this community, but in the years I've been here, the one thing that was true way back then, now, and probably will be in the future that we rally around is not only our appreciation of open space, but the all-important preservation of that space. Thank you again, Mr. Smith. Thank you, citizens. We'll move on to agenda item number two. The request, this matter is currently under litigation, and until that is sorted out, council needs to take a step back. So I'm asking to table this to a date uncertain after agenda item number two. Motion to table, please. So move.
Second.
Move, and a second, and thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes clearly have it. Thank you, council. Agenda item number three, request to table to May the 16th, which is the next council meeting. Motion to table, council? So move. A second, please.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes clearly have it. Thank you, council. Agenda item number four is, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, sir. Did you know that you had a whole group of speakers?
Yeah, we waited, we've been postponed, we've been waiting, and he has a smirk on his face right now. This is not fair to us. We postponed the last meeting, this time people, every, a whole neighborhood came in for this, for item two. Even Mr. Baxi stood here for item number two. And we've been waiting for this, and he looks, starts smirking, smiling again at us. This is wrong.
Thank you for your comments. Council has voted. We're on to agenda item number four.
That is wrong.
You gotta be kidding me.
Yeah, what happened with item number two?
For taxpayers.
What did we do wrong?
This guy thrives on harassing our community.
Sues all our lives, does everything. Why did we get dismissed on item number two?
And not even have a vote.
We're taxpayers.
We are. All the neighbors are here.
All the neighbors can, they're harassing.
It's under litigation.
It's under litigation.
For lighting?
It was under litigation when you take, when you.
We all came here.
Okay.
All right, so if he can just, it is what it is.
Commander, come on, this is wrong. You guys, you postponed the last meeting.
If he's saying to table, it's table.
Every single neighbor came here. He's laughing, smirking.
Yeah, look at his face.
He's, this is, everybody's wrong.
Really isn't fair. That's not fair. No, no, my said. Or the people vibing on a hearing.
Back to Number Four. Agenda Item Number Four, Council Discussion and Approval Second Reading of Ordinance Zero 2016 Zero Four, amending the Town of Cave Creek Town Code, Chapter 52, Water Section 52.4002, Financial Responsibility Deposits. Town Manager?
Mayor and Council, thank you. I gave you the revised ordinance in front of you. The red language is the recommendation from the council. We wanted it focused on rental properties and not on owner-owned, so we broke it out that the property owners who reside do not lease contract, the residential properties that would not be required to make the deposit. Rental customers who tend to be our problem area have been included, so it's restricted to those folks. If there's a question about a property owner who would never have to pay a deposit, that would not be true, in that folks who are two payments behind, more than 60 days, would be required to make the deposit, and that's a current policy we've been using for a number of years now. And just on the side, regarding late payments and people who haven't made, we used to be at the 50s when I first got here, we're down to five or six now a month, and it tends to be the same eight or nine individuals. So that program has really worked, brought that programming to compliance. Thank you.
Questions from council? Anything else, Town Manager?
No, sir.
There's public comment on Agenda Item Number Four. Ms. Carey, you got a comment?
I have no comments.
Back to council for a motion. And Councilman Bunch, thank you.
Move to give Second Reading to Ordinance 2016 dash zero four, in accordance with the Town of Cave Creek, Arizona, amending the Town of Cave Creek Town Code, Chapter 52, Water Section 52 dot 402, Financial Responsibility Deposits.
Second. Motion made a second, Councilman Bunch.
Yeah, we got this fixed like I had requested, so I'm happy to support it.
Councilman Asher, you had the second.
I did, and I echo Ernie's comments.
Nothing else from council? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes clearly have it. Thank you, council. Last of the agenda, Item Five, Council Discussion and Action to Amend Council Policy Number Thirty-Five Regarding Establishment of a Minimum Contingency Percentage. Town Manager?
Mayor and Council, currently that policy is at 10%. Typically, that ranges between 7.5% and 10%. We're asking to bring it down to 8%. 1% for us, for the towns, is roughly $53,000 and change. They will also help us with our shortfall this particular year, so we're requesting that. We still maintain a contingency, it's still funded, but it's funded at 8% instead of 10%, and that's within the parameters of financial advisors who say 7.5% to 10%.
Questions from council? There is public comment on Agenda Item Number Five. Back to council then. Councilman Bunch, thank you.
Move to approve amendments to Council Policy Number Thirty-Five.
Second.
Major, second, and Councilman Bunch?
With the lack of some of the revenues, it makes sense to do this.
Vice Mayor Lamont?
Correct.
All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes clearly have it.
Nope, nay.
Okay, let the record reflect that the vote was five for and one against. Motion to adjourn, council?
So moved.
Thank you.